Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the Lord is the end of all.
Say hello to your second chairman.
Here.
Excuse me.
Here.
Hammond is here. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none is there a motion to approve the decision?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discretion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There are motion to approve the minutes of the last year.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discretion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any concerns to be raised? Five, five, we're, we're waiting for it. And you guys want to take requests or not from like?
So far. So, um, you guys. I sent out a sheet that shows the seven townships that applied. Um, but I had a couple of home goals, um, about the township. That didn't. That sent in last year that didn't get awarded. Um, there was three and I just thought of maybe better. Printout of those two here.
That's great. And so these are, uh.
This is what was up for last years and that is the only one that you granted.
Okay. And the projects on here are the same projects as if you have applications for.
Yes. So. I don't know how. Want to do it, but every, um, mention that Kerry and I could figure out is. Um, there's like a hundred and sixteen thousand. In there. Um. So we were quite short last time and, um. I think one of the townships. What was the other dollar bill Kerry, a hundred and twenty if they paid it back, but I don't believe they have to pay it back. I think they can, if they got more than what their thing cost, I believe they could use it on something else. Don't they gotta give it back and so lenders should be.
They only get eighty percent of.
So then there should be like, uh, hundred and twenty. In there.
So on this one where it says a hundred and forty-nine thousand available, that's not, that's nothing then.
No, that's what we're short, right? On the other one.
On this sheet.
That's what we're asking. That's, that's what we were short last year.
Oh, okay.
We had, we had more, you know, way more last year. This year we have seven. So what are you getting out, you know?
Yeah.
But that Garfield one is the one that. Took all the money that bridged on three oh eight. Um. So we must have a little more funding. Last year, cause.
Yeah, we pulled up a little bit.
Awarded them two hundred.
This is, is this the last year of authorized, the early authorized funding? So Hannah, we're counting this new legislature.
Right. I have not heard, I have not heard anymore. They're going to try to, I don't, I have not heard any updates though.
Okay. I do think Cindy was saying some things about maybe trying to, to Kerry Billford. Reauthorize this at least. It's been a long kind of stuff discussed.
Right. So this would just, you know, just so you guys know, like, I don't think we award. Anybody till the end of January, is it, or?
January fifteenth.
Fifteenth. So. But I did this in front of you. Um, before and all, they all turned in their five-year plan as has to be in my office by the end of October. Everybody met that deadline and so. I have all the rest of the paper. I just give you a copy of the first page. Cause that ends what they applied for this year. So wait, a lot of them have work they could use out to twenty-eight. And so.
Okay. Cause that was something that I, you know, with the, um, you know, almost four times as much requests, I guess at least many times as much requested as, uh, as what we have available. It seemed important to make sure we were really careful on process. So I went back in all the, uh, reef. Authorizing documentation and all the stuff they've got on like the townships, kind of the, the township's website. Um, and it, it did say that they had to, so when they had to, so we have, I'm sorry. We had the five-year plans by August, right?
Uh, uh.
Cause the applications had to be by the end of October.
Yeah, last one it was.
Okay. Cause when I was, yeah, I was looking through these and I saw, I found, it looked like there were like five grant applications and two, uh.
Five-year.
Two that were five-year plans, but for the, for the five that are grant applications, we also have five, uh, five-year plans for those.
Yes, I do. I am. And if you, if you guys wanna see them, like in truly, may shop these of them.
We should, yeah, we should consider them. They're, they're part of the rules we're considering. And then the, the, the two that were just five-year plans in here, did those ones have grant applications or just the five?
Uh, yes, they did. Um, and that's, I, I don't remember. Which two, but yes.
And so it looked like.
They also had.
Value to your amount.
Yeah. So there was seven with that, I mean, all seven had a grant application. Um. I thought there's five-year plans with them all. I go back through and check that.
And there is one that, um, proposes that we do a hundred percent and they do zero. So I don't know what we do with that.
It looks like when you did the breakdown on that other page, you. Correctly said, okay, well, you can't get the full ninety, but if you're requesting if the project costs ninety, then you know, you have to appropriate eighty percent of that.
Whatever, whatever they're asking for, they can, they have to cover twenty percent. The township knows. So then I just, whatever they put down for their estimate, I just took the twenty percent off and so that's all we can ask for is twenty percent less. Is a grant, you know, but yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you can keep all this. I mean. This is like a very big, time-consuming. Thing to have to go through all them. But yeah, I can make you a copy or I can make copies and keep it. You guys can keep the originals, how you want to proceed.
I just.
That's totally up to.
And we already just, a lot of people won't get awarded. So, you know, however we slice it. So it seems like it's for them to go from the top and say, okay, well, there's a lot of shals in the authorizing. Legislation. So just make sure that everything that says a shall, they check those boxes. I had some concerns about that because one of the shals is that they use the county commissioners. Uh, grant applications, which are like a part of a Excel spreadsheet. I don't. I was in there and I can, I can send it over to you, but they have a lot more detail than, uh, than our county applications. And I, I think technically by the state law. We, we may not be authorized to. Spur city funding for this, this grant if they aren't submitted on the correct grant application, which it would be kind of a silly reason to, to deny them. But I also certainly don't wanna. Authorize any funding that there'd be anything that the state would be able to say, no, you didn't, you didn't follow the right process here, or some other township might say, well, you awarded this to the neighbors, but. You know, why, why was it okay that these folks didn't, didn't fill us out? Um, there is something about levies. We need to make sure that they, they all have a, a high, a secondary road levy and they do.
Yes, I do. Yeah. They did. I don't know why it go away.
Right. Cause yeah, not all the applications had it noted on there. I know that.
Now the problem with the application, that they're saying shall use the state application.
Yeah.
In those kickout meetings, pickoff meetings, they didn't have anything and they said, come up with your own.
Classic.
And Star Township, because Ron Peterson.
Yeah.
He was a former state engineer. He knew how to fill one out and they went, use his.
Okay.
Yeah. So if they didn't put it on the right application, that's not their fault.
Yeah.
So I, I would hate to deny them based on.
Yeah. And I think between now and authorization, we want to make sure that Michael just looks through all that and verifies that we don't do anything dispersing funds to anybody that. Um, not to make anything that's shallow in state law. So.
I may even say if I can blast your C P O, I apparently act as our. Assistant.
Well, we, we had the. Down.
Yeah, we ended up having, you know.
He's because of the, head of this and I mean. So just, so there's a reason why on the top of that sheet. I put down ran, random order and the other one, it was alphabetical because. You guys had me prioritized a couple of years ago. I'm doing that yet. Because all of a sudden, everybody got mad at me and. To me, this wasn't even supposed to be part of, I wish Superintendent Scott would tell Dave stepped in and didn't think. He could trust the commissioners and the townships. So it had to come through our office. So it dumped it all on us and it, you know, it ain't that big a deal, but it's just one more thing. So he got his feet wet on this one. We went through them all.
Yeah. I mean, we should, according to the, the rules, we should look at all of their annual financial reports for each applicant. And we should make sure that they can't afford to do these things on their own. And then we also probably need to make a judgment call on whether we prioritize those that have. Less funding so that we give them more assistance or we prioritize applications that have done a better job. Leveing taxes against themselves to pay for these improvements and are going to be able to kick in a bigger match. So that's an important part of, of, of our decision-making. And then the five-year plans, I think we're really supposed to be looking at how do these fit into the five-year plans, um, in the applications, we need to have, um, detour, detour routes. And then the number of people affected so that we can point to some of those things and some of our decisions as well. Cause, um, you know, ju- just like on your desk, it, it. It's, it's a lot of factors that we're supposed to weigh for a limited pool of money and we, we do want to make sure that we're, you know, broadly across the whole county, providing the most, most benefit we can. I, I'm talking a lot. I thought, if others have to think, you know, like the projects.
Just, just so you know that, um, I took these off the twenty-five. Grant applications, there are a few dollars difference between last years. Because of they had waited here. So they don't come up a little bit. So, but I did hear from two of the township board members that were rejected. And they just wanted to make sure that at the meeting, they were gonna get looked at. You know, not skipped over again, or you know, so they just, and I said, no, I, that's what I decided to print out, who got skipped last. Time around, I should say, you know, so that's why I printed out that other one.
Yep.
So the numbers might not match up exactly with what they were last year, only because. They kind of put ten percent, seven percent, whatever. And like Travis said. The townships were all trying to get Ron Peterson. Hired to do everybody's because this envelope is. Almost too detailed, but I mean, it's like you said, there's so many things. He's given it all. He's got it all coming, but so I just figured I'd get it in front of you. So you have some time to look and see what. What else I needed to. Given I could sure make copies of everybody's five-year plan that they turned in this year.
Yeah.
And then you guys can make as many copies that you need, or if you just want me to leave the material here. The originals, that's fine with me too. And once you get done. Here you can keep printing it off. If I can put it back in the file cabinet, whatever.
We've got it. So I suppose you can just.
Well, you, you don't have the five-year plan.
Not bad. Yeah. And then that other, the other couple of applications, excuse me, we can look at those one. It looks like we've got three, three meetings. So between, between now and the, and the fifteenth.
Yeah. And I think last year, I don't know, I think we invited the township members in, I, I think.
We invited them.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I, I have a bunch of questions. Um, and then one, one suggestion for another criteria. Um, one is, when we do, if somebody writes in, and Glenwood comes in, they, they already have the criteria, they probably need to be the only and zero coming attention. I mean, if they don't have the twenty percent. I mean, you know.
That's, that's the, that's what we want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's, that's what my favorite, you know.
So, yeah. And then, um.
What they do is a stipulation in the.
Yeah.
In the thing that they have to have their twenty percent to give the grant.
Yeah.
In five, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. And then Pleasant Valley was really, really confusing. Um, you know, and I, I don't know if you have any insight into this or whether we just have to ask them. Um, they proposed to replace a concrete or a bridge, but didn't explain why, um.
Structural damage.
Yeah. Doesn't say that in the application though.
That's what, it was explained last year.
Oh, okay. Great. Yeah. I, I missed that completely. Um, and then it's a completion in twenty twenty-four. So is that like they just took last year's application and put it on this year's?
Yeah, because we told them to.
Yeah, that's a retread and making them.
They didn't have to go through all the papers. The one that we did, that we denied last year, we said that we would keep them in the file.
Okay. So we do have a more complete application for that somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. And then it's replaced wooden bridge. Um, it's completion in twenty twenty-five.
It's not.
Well, mine is they crossed out and changed the dates and.
And that's good enough. If they do the, if they do an update like that, uh. Yeah, the.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five is what they.
Twenty-five, six, wooden.
Oh, I see.
Right.
Twenty-six. Obviously they changed it. Okay. Yeah, I was completely confused because they, they, you know, they changed this date, but they didn't change expected year's completion. Oh, I, I, I just, I couldn't make any sense.
Garfield, Pleasant Valley.
Pleasant Valley. Yeah. The dates don't match on it.
So the Garfield one, I believe is. Opened. And that's, I, I didn't bring that up on the meeting, you know, this meeting. But you know, they put a big enough bridge, Garfield did.
Yeah.
So that.
Now it's ours.
Comes back to us.
And there's a few others of these that I had some questions about.
Most, there's no other ones that are gonna.
Okay.
Come back to us right at the moment.
Okay.
Nothing else. So, and that Little One Bridge. Was Valley.
Well, they've got two structures that they're trying to do. Yeah.
There was the.
There's two, it's last year's.
From last year to this year. So they do.
Yeah, Garfield's got another one. Yeah, they, they added to the older, older file.
Yeah, and Garfield.
Older bridge is one that took.
All the money.
Right.
Last year. But I still, I mean, I had to put it in there. They, they want a culprit.
It, it also struck me that there are safety issues here and that might be another thing that the commission considers is how dire the situation is. As I look at, um, the application, you can't tell everything from the application because in the cases, people didn't bother to, you know, fill out part of them. But just, just from what I read, it looks to me like, uh, start township called To The Ridge with running pilings. Um, and a splitting tech plane. I think. I, I mean, it wouldn't take all the money, but it seems to me that we are missing a little bit of power.
We got safety and, and amount of users and how many people it affects.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and how far the detour would be, you know, I mean, if you take it out of, out of, make sure those people have to go ten miles or two miles.
Yeah. So I.
So on that one, nobody lives on that road.
Huh.
And it fairly well did, and which.
Which is another thing that the applications are supposed to have in them. That's me. Whether they're at end or not, that's one of them.
Lots of Ron Peterson.
So. Map, maps as well. Um, you know, I, I know there's some of these.
They aren't required. That's the problem. They aren't required to put a map with their application or pictures.
It, according to the, the handbook that they should be working off of, it says that they need to, if it all the applications.
They should, right? I don't think it's.
It is one of the requirements.
Yeah. I didn't think it was, but, uh, yeah, I can pretty much tell you most of everything that's in front of you. Is. In pretty tough shape.
Yeah.
You know, just because county units have taken care of these, all these low structures of the bottom line. Ten, twelve years ago, ten years ago, before this came out. So I pretty much, unfortunately, know just about every one of these, cause that used to be my job when I was, wanted to inspect all these small structures. And, uh. So that's why. Uh, and I, you know, if they need to take pictures or. Cause we don't, these are small enough that the state doesn't require. An inspection, we have to do it on our own, you know, most, all these structures. So there'd be some old pictures, you know, maybe that I could give you, but yeah, I don't know if they. Don't know if even Ron Peterson, I think they included a map. You know, the, the map that the state provides you of your township, you know. But that is such a terrible map to tie that printed. It's very giddy map for Lake County. Cause I had to go, some of them put the number of the structure. On our application, someone put a description where it's at. So then I go to that map. And find, so we had something uniform to go with it instead of a road I know where it's at anyway. So.
Yeah. Yeah. Some just have magnitude, magnitude.
Yeah, there, a lot of them, that's all they put out. Cause that's all people record this. They want, they go on a new road number. Not something they just want flat launch, beginning and end. You're done for that.
You aren't doing this now.
But like, I mean. So this Glenwood one, you know, that has zero, do we don't, do they not have the money or did they just build the application out wrong?
You know, I.
That's what the financial board's supposed to tell us.
I don't go back and correct them. I just normally turn the ends. Pass that along to you and then we'll go from there.
If this, this structure, are you familiar with this structure, Rod?
Uh, in Glenwood, the one on four sixty-seven just north of three hundred and six.
Yep.
Three, fair and three.
Or three hundred and three, just a small woods.
It says number of county residents affected is ten, so it's not a.
Well, you got three oh two to the north.
Yep.
And County gravel. East and west to the south, you know, so.
The kind of farm to market or just kind of a minimum maintenance or what type of?
No, it's not minimum maintenance. They, they maintain that.
Okay.
I don't think they're allowed to.
Minimum maintenance is okay. No maintenance.
Oh, okay. Minimum maintenance is.
Okay. No maintenance. Which is another thing that's a little misleading on our application is that, you know, we've got three checkboxes and it's like, are you doing a levy by this statute or by this statute? Or is it, and is it full maintenance? And they're all listed as criteria, but it isn't.
And not all of them have a. Engineer on staff to.
Yeah.
That knows. You know, so that kind of comes down on me and you, I guess.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I think, yeah, we're, we're tasked with a lot of.
But I mean, if you, if you had questions where we should have. You know, them come in and explain. What they're looking at, whatever.
That's a good idea. So show me table that.
I mean, there was a pretty massive job. To decide. I just wanted to get it in front of you, you know.
Just gotta start looking at them. Now with that, with that being said, uh, our commissioners elect, since this is going to be. Really have to be decided by your second term, their second being. Uh. It's proper for us to give them all this information so they got what it adds up to, isn't it?
Yep. I think that's really important.
Have they got? Yes.
Yeah. And maybe you also will link to the, um, beliefs.
Right.
You have to take that into consideration under.
Yeah, I think it would be good, you know, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be, uh. Off vacation at twenty-five month tennis.
When you see, we all care with everything.
Yeah.
Does anything.
Well, I will, I, I will pass my handbook on to the next generation commissioner if I can still have it, so. Right.
Okay, I will. Give you guys a copy of. Complained five-year plans. What else do I need? I didn't pronounce.
Do we want to look at their financial reports and the five-year plans?
I, I have no way of doing, I'd have to open.
Or they, they should be on file with you. So we shouldn't, they're, they're supposed to, they're supposed to give them to you to, can be kept on file by the county prior to, uh, some date earlier this year, but they didn't do that. That, and, and this is something probably that we want to make sure Michael takes a look through. It's just, and you know, there's quite a bit that says it's. As, as per described in the statute and if we, you know, I, I, I wouldn't want to do anything that is, uh, against statute. We're handing out money and we're cool. It's not big enough to give everybody the money they want.
In, in our rules, there's a saying, you absolutely have to award, but if we.
Any month funds we award have to be awarded by the fifteenth. We don't have to award all the funds by the fifteenth. We can sit on it and. And hope for more funding to come in and maybe I'm old enough to pay everybody next year, but. But anything that we, any projects we award have to be awarded for these to, I'll need that. So after the annual township meetings, Terry, they don't submit anything to the goal?
Not the five-year plans.
No, the financial.
Oh, the financial, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Cause we will, that's one of the things that is one of the minimum criteria we're supposed to consider is, is their ability to pay for it.
I, I know we would be required to get back to, uh, Scarfield one that there's zero, zero matter, but it might be.
Glenwood.
Glenwood, excuse me. Yeah. That, it might be a good idea. It would be certainly a nice gesture to give them a call. And remind them of that.
Well, we can still consider them the way the application is. It's just, it's gonna be twenty percent of sixty thousand is gonna be their point.
It could be in our, if they decided that they didn't want to continue with the application, so. Uh, if they had to, we have twenty percent. So maybe burn job easier that they, if they decided, well, maybe not, we're gonna have to call you know.
It's both of them.
Yeah. But it takes that one application out of the mix and. Makes a little.
Now, that was my old staker for process. I was like, well, maybe I can weed out a couple of these and it'll be a little bit smaller pool. And that we're selecting out of it.
Why not, I'm gonna weed out three of them, but they've already got to play.
Yeah.
Three, well, three of them already got. Out of the last three years, for the two, however many times, Star Bethel and.
And actually, that was one of the things that I was, uh, wanted to make sure we had for the next one is, is the list of all the great funding that we have authorized previously so that we.
Star Bethel and Garfield.
Just those three out.
Yep.
They've already, they're three of them.
Amounts. They've already had their bite of the apple, but it could be.
Well, they got their number one. That's all I had. Because they have the list, they have an order of the top five.
Right.
And those three took their number one.
Yeah.
So the other four have their number one. So. And that's the other thing with Pleasant Valley. They've obviously applied for two structures. Well, their number one is the concrete structure. That was the only one that was on last year.
Right.
On two oh four. So that'll lower their award amount also. We just look at that concrete structure on their application.
There's, there's a lot, if there's no, but it's on that paper. That's why I think it should be a presence to. Tell you what. Their extension. Cause they, I mean, they call up and I talk to them maybe three minutes. Okay. Handle it. Okay. So I gave a little more information and then I never hit back, but. Or some of the township board members are basically in Florida. Are basically in Florida or something. So, I mean.
Really trying to get some.
Well, I do hard to get a whole.
Oh, how accurate are their estimates from a year ago?
Isn't hard to say.
Well, that's what their application says, so.
Well, I know, I know.
But then they have to submit the bills also, and they still can't go over eighty percent.
Thank you.
So.
Right, I don't know. If, uh. Gertfield. Some is a dollar bill, yes, have they?
They have.
If you go over.
They did, they're covering it, I don't know if they just got their, their, uh, hundred percent.
Because it's, we have to. Signage and we have that up there, but. The only years, I gotta have our bridge inspector, go inspector, if I wanna do anything. I always put it in. I ain't too worried about it, but before. We put any signage up there on my. On special to look at it, because. Always don't have an engineer on staff, like they used to. He, he got all the business, so.
And I'll take a look at the handbook as well, if you guys have any specific questions, if you'd like to press before, or subsequent deals. That I'm to allow them, kind of, put it in the handbook, maybe they can contact you or someone that's more.
Right. There's no further discussion, uh. Yeah, next item on the agenda, can you provide my application, from the current year, the slash?
Okay, and I did not receive a check yet. So, and I contacted him last week again, and he has not gotten back to me, email, text, and calls, and. No response, so I don't know, he's.
A loose tablet.
I'll look at it.
The motion and the second to table, all those favorites say aye.
Aye.
Closest. Motion carries.
Okay, and then you have the, you tabled Earl Nelson's. Uh, from last week, so I met with him, uh. The specifics, um. I printed out a map, you wanted to see what the plan is, or?
Yeah.
That's gonna make its way back on to me, you know, take action.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess I'll do it, it would be.
I didn't make it on.
Okay, I can give you the maps to look at till the next time, is that?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
How work?
Hopefully that on the thirty first.
Yeah, I think when I post through the agenda, Rod hasn't heard that one yet.
It's wrote.
Right.
But. Way different story than what I saw it. Makes difference when. We have a map, now it's easy to scratch deeper. So he, he bought back the. As you can see in the corner of. Section fourteen there, he bought back the. ARB, putting his pin in there, but then there are also. Forty horizontal, whatever you wanna call it, from the corner there, over on the north side of section. Twenty two, you run the water on the south ditch, going west. Which to me is a good thing. Because. Um, I should have, or actually was mine. So if you look at that. I should have drew them in there. But in that triangle. This section fourteen up here, we have a forty eight inch culvert down into the triangle, out of the same side, it runs west into the triangle. South to the road ditch, there's a double pipe there, just where the border's gonna come out, and there's a pipe that comes out of. Section fifteen, I think it is, it all brings into that centerpiece, that triangle, and we have a heck of a time getting that to drain. And I think that will, I mean, it's all gonna end up in the south ditch. What doesn't go, this is the Earl's, I think his son lives there now. But what doesn't run to the west on the north side, all goes to the south, and we've been trying to get more water to the south in the past. Ten, twelve years. So I, I think. The way I look at it, that looks like. A good deal. In the long run. So. And they're gonna, so they're putting in an eight inch tile.
Yeah.
Okay, and they're, they're running through a ten inch. Uh, plastic. Casing under the road comes out there, gives to the east of, or gives to the west side of those. pine trees, that's the old Saint Peter's Church. Uh, block there, so they're, you know, it's kind of low, there ain't really a ditch there, so they're gonna get it, and that'll be closer to the culverts. That come out of that triangle anyway. And the lift station will be on his property. So apparently that's for. It'll bring into the ditch like all water always have, and the tile, I suppose, and. After. Words, I don't know. What, what is it? Well, they put a lift station right in where the tile, where they're born under the road, so I guess I was questioning. Why the lift station, why not just? Run it.
Cause it doesn't drop.
Yeah, okay, that's, so that was the only thing I wanted, see, I know, and I, I don't have that, he didn't put that in, so. That was the only, only thing, cause it is. Of course. Every time we do a study, everything is Clay County's flat. You can't dig a ditch twelve foot deep to get the water, so this is about the only way to get the water out of it. And it, it will be outside the right away. So.
So that water runs west then, then turns south.
Yes. Yeah, and there is no pipe under.
Greenfield?
No, there is no pipe under that corner, I don't know, cause.
Until you get south of the mountain, by the Red Cemetery.
Yeah, down by it's.
Cause the water goes west. There also, but that first. House there, it only, it has a very small pipe in it, it would have had it out in nineteen. And we tried to put a bigger pipe in, cause there actually is a bigger pipe under four sixty nine to the east of that place. But we used FEMA money and we couldn't put anything. Couldn't upsize it. Would have helped a little bit maybe, but I think this is gonna help that corner. More, I believe, anyway, I don't know, there's like two hundred and. Some acres, they're being tiled into there, so I don't know if.
Earl and all that, oh, they do.
They're part of this region, since.
Oh, yeah, Reed Field, so he's, that's right, they're looking into his, I think he's already done, maybe.
Nope.
Nope.
No, it'll be, he did, he did a different use, that'll keep a lot of that water from running off the wheels to that ditch and those seminoans hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully it'll go that way instead of towards your greenfield. So we're in our, that little structure there, it's going to. That's the big problem.
It should, that'll all be tiled in from the greenfields themselves, right?
Yeah, and all that. Yeah, we had quite a problem with that.
We always have that.
From that concrete structure east west there. Just north of where the, this pipe is. Figure the state problems there, we may.
So I still got the water coming from the north.
Yeah, that's right, there's plenty of that.
To be, it looks like it'll help us out.
Yeah.
True. So, all right. Well, we have a beaters, that's in the lead, so I'll go through these, I'm gonna give you five here, on the beginning. Yeah, and for us. Only thing I got to add is. The, after you come back from Christmas break. When, uh, you can call the county cell phone, there'll be a new voice, so you can land. But he gets the phone after Christmas.
What a Christmas present.
It would be a happy.
You were a naughty boy.
Did it have your voice?
We hope so.
Probably, if you did. So after he gets eighteen years out, and then we'll see how he, we'll see how he answers, hey, I'm always in cheerful.
Rod, Rod, yes, read my shirt. Your lack of cheer is disturbing. But not really.
Actually, I thank you.
Thank you, Rod.
And, uh, we have a couple of contracts here, uh. Anybody wanna meet everybody, wanna let y'all know, they give them the book contacts, recommend like.
And you're, you're.
You know, they're, they're, they're both. I mean, both contracts, and they're both, I have been coming in.
They're food sign, they're both contacts, second.
There's a motion and a second, and any further discussion, you know. Uh, carrying that, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Closest. So we have a contract for the Indian County Jail, again, not my children, unfortunately. Um, and then we got the field. Thank you, it's near folder, we just received one bed. So this is for food, the jail. And I think we always, let's get one bed. Getting a couple of things ready. So this is, uh, January first, twenty twenty five, new January, it's a ranch of reunion. Um, six dollars per daily meal, money, you can pay one dollar before she's three. Basically then has all the expensive patients that, um, that are given. So that looks, looks good. Should be.
What, and you reviewed it, that's good.
Um, Scott. Last week, we opened bids for the Bobcat.
What do we, the Bobcat?
Yep.
The Bobcat bid awards, and, uh, we're gonna look over and make sure it matched. Uh, the specs.
Okay.
About long for sort of bike.
I had both.
What's that?
I had both.
Okay, all right. The, the Bobcat did look good, I passed it back to Carrie, so I think it looks fine.
We need to approve that.
Yeah, so I'll move to something about that, too.
Sorry.
There's a motion and a second to accept the Bobcat bid, um, any further discussion? Carrying none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion carrying.
Sure.
Yeah, not, I don't have it.
Now, I don't think we gotta make any decisions on it, right, it's been done. Just the lining?
This is different, this is an issue with what's in this. Oh, is this why the camera thing was on the?
Yeah.
I'm sure that's all the reason about that.
I saw that camera thing, and I thought, oh.
So that this. We have a concern or an issue with the stack and the elevator shaft. Oh. And make the agenda, gotta come back next week.
I did get that on there, um, I mean, you could tell them about it.
Yeah. Um. We're not, we're not able to line that stack. Cause they have to. Have access direct into the four inch pipe. Which we can't get. Uh, because the stool plant is in the pipes leading to the stools on third floor, it's three inch carpet. There's no way to accept access from the attic. Because there's so much coming up through that hole, took the board for that. For that four inch stack, plus their trans, the transfers to three inch carpet. Below the, the grade of the floor in the attic, and there's conduits and. Tably coming up out there, it must be antennas on the roof, so be next to impossible to cut that three inch there, gain access to that stack. So we're not able to line that stack.
What are the, what are the antennas for on the roof?
I have no idea. I think there's still you.
Yeah, it's all of the nine one ones on the radio, so I mean, will we? Well, they're still gonna have one. There's satellite here. Right, satellite station, yeah, most of those will probably be backwards.
And I'm not even sure if they had all that turned out, out of there, if they could see the four inch. Cause there's so much there, you can't tell what's going on, you. There's definitely, it goes from four, four inch back to three inch copper in the attic, and back to four inch when it goes up on the roof. And there's so much activity there, you can't not tell.
Is there a new, is there a way to put a new line in?
Yeah. There is a way to put a new line in, it's quite a bit of cost.
A new stack, you mean?
New stack, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess.
The stack is presently cast?
Yes, it's four inch heavy duty cast.
Yeah. Why is that so expensive, did you replace it with PVC, for instance?
Well, I think the reason it's so expensive is because Schumacher elevator is involved, because it'll be used in the car as a platform to work off of, it's forty, forty feet of pipe there to bring down. And we were bringing a local plumber, and we were operating that car itself, and we're taking all liability of, was aimed to answer the car, piece of that, if you did four inch swing, this is a grip, goes through the rope. They didn't fall back on us. So it was that real hefty price tag with them.
How much?
Twenty nine thousand. Twenty eight, so it'd be exactly.
Sounds like a little rolling the dice, might almost be. If there wouldn't be danger to humans, it would be mainly danger.
Or a property. It looks good on the outside, looks good on the inside. I guess fifty eight years old.
The pipe looks good, you can say.
Yeah, it does. There's some cracks, there's no cracks, there's no pitting, there's nothing like that on the inside at all.
Well, the best part about it, nothing sits. That helps. We don't do it again.
I can't even do it, that sounds horrible, cause. You know, you have three, three, three quarter inch copper water lines, and two, what's the same one of them? I'm gonna get a panel. Day after, and put a soft round, it's pretty rare, you know, it's pretty rare for a soldering gun, but I go, it all happens, so.
The last one in years. It's only, I'm still more leaves. No, I think.
But if it looks good, I mean.
Yeah.
There's sense, so we don't really know.
No, there's, there's tons of, you know, verticals, cast.
Like plumber that looked at it, brought out, Schumacher brought out Omaha. Must be who they use on their jobs, so, so he's able to look, you know, this is heavy duty, looks good.
I, I have.
Last forever.
Yeah. I had replaced one, one cast iron stack. And, uh, in a place, and it wasn't all that costly, but it was. It only had my own electrical junk, my ham radio stuff running alongside of it, but, uh. And that one did fail at a point. So I just replaced it with PVC, but, uh.
Yeah, if, if Schumacher's plumber says that it looks like it will last forever, it's hard to justify.
I did not get that in writing, but.
Yeah, it's hard to justify pain.
Yeah.
Usually, usually there's issues that show up, especially at the joints.
You'll see the pitting on the outside.
Correct.
Yeah.
Chances are we're okay.
But.
Pour some rain away, or you don't.
What's that?
Pour some rain away.
Well, no.
All right, I just wanted to sense the direction, so.
Yeah, that's one of those who kind of roll the dice, and I think.
Super appropriate. Sounds good.
Anything else?
Uh. There is, but I'll do that another day.
Shield.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have you ever even had a chance to see the vouchers?
Who's approved?
The motion and second to approve any discussion.
I can recall a discussion about paint, it was like a five thousand dollar. I just missed that. Just curious about what. Why are you doing five thousand dollars of interior painting?
Uh, Nurse and Doctor, um, who brought this office. There's, there's a few of them.
That's a year.
Yeah.
And the extension.
Oh, so it's just that little, never mind, never mind, the, the, the small additional amount was a little bit of the extension, though.
Yeah, we, we ran out of room on the line.
Got you. Thank you. Alright, yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we've got the DOT agreements for the. So. Two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yep, and so this, this is the agreement that took a little while to get here, but the state has done what they need to do on their end. To. Explain precisely how funds are gonna flow. From the state, well, from the feds, from the state to us, once we request refunds, and we will be paying for these things. Up front, and then we're going to, the state will reimburse us for the thirty days for everything that's eligible expenses, so. So today, this is authorizing your signature, it'll then go back to them, and then they'll have a signature. We have attached here, you know, our next step is gonna be to put out an RFP. And we've got the revised scope of work attached here. I talked to Sophia Teacog about it. And she said that she'd be happy to assist with working essentially this scope of work into an RFP. That I would bring back to the commission for approval before we can put it out, so. I move to authorize the chairperson to sign. Uh, the agreement here with the state regarding funding, so going to our Spanish agreement.
There's a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, where are these sites at? Four hundred and sixty second, let's see. Sixty second is gonna be, is that the county line room? No, that's four fifty-two. Uh, the forty, sixty second, is that the Clay County Fund? Nope, no. About four fifty-second, so we have.
It's four sixty-second in this application.
Sure is. Yeah.
And it keeps referencing four sixty-two, so.
The Iron Grove.
Something draw. Four sixty-two is technically nineteen at, at Highway forty-six.
Right.
Yeah. And down here is just a little bit to the west of nineteen.
So are you seeing that in the, you're seeing that in the, the attachment only, right?
The deliverables, so what the scope is going to cover.
Yeah, it's south of Summit Cal.
There's a new park and non-memorized launch site at four sixty-second.
Yeah.
Including waterfront access improvement.
Yeah, that is incorrect. It's correct in the maps, but it is not correct. There. So we might have to. Send it back, so any changes to the agreement, and I think to this attachment would technically be a part of the agreement, I think any changes need to be approved in writing by, by the state, so I can. Communicate with them that you discovered a typo and get it back on the agenda for the last, last meeting in the, the year here. Is that acceptable with everybody?
Yeah, we get it back in time. I think the other thing is, I know Cal's or four fifty-two.
Yep, yep.
That road going south is, they believe is closed, they're not a hundred percent sure, but the landowners are likely closed.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know how that's gonna affect the scope of this also.
Well, that, that would be something that would probably be discovered pretty quickly in the, in the public input portion, so.
But we don't need to discover, we don't need to pay money for something that we. That the, that the chairman of the township is already here about.
Well, and we, and we would, you know, we. So this is the maximum, this, this is the outline around. Uh, the work that can be done, but they, so they can't explore things that are beyond what's listed here. Uh, but you certainly, you know, there's nothing that says that everything that's listed here has to be something that's looked into deeply, so you know, that just means that there'd be more funding available to look at the other projects. I, I have a little concern about sending it back and saying we actually want to change the scope of work now because. We now are quite a few months into them having to prove this scope of work and, you know, gone through these things. I mean, we could. Leave it as it is and say, alright, well, we're not actually gonna be looking at anything important. Sixty-second anyway, it turns out that's not a location that's acceptable and sign this and move along, but.
I, I guess we gotta.
Would you, would you mind coming to back the phone, so people. Yeah, because it won't be part of the reporting and.
Yeah, I just, I just come here to, to listen in and find out where you're at on this, because. Um, I kind of heard that it was, you know, it wasn't being pursued any longer or whatever, now we'll find out that. Um, because we have discussed. On what's going on as far as it's gonna affect, normally township. Okay, because we don't want any, there's, um. Except any liabilities or whatever for this whatsoever, so.
Yep.
As we visit, before the meeting or whatever, we were talking about the different roads that were closed or whatever because of an accident. We have to go back. Early seventies or whatever to check. Because the board members at that time, as remember, they went along and made sure that everything going down towards the river. Was road closed for liability purposes or whatever. And I've lived on that road nearly all my life, and there's never been anything down there, whatever. Because I think a lot of that ground, if there was farms, far less out, now all got taken away in the fifties when the flood comes through. And so, and the river is still taking. So.
Yep.
So, um, we have discussed it as a board or whatever, and we're out there to do our homework and find out or whatever, because we definitely don't want.
Yeah. Yeah, well, and then just, you know, for clarity, you know, on, on where we're at in the process here, so, uh, so we applied for this flat grant. Like a year and a half ago or something like that, and, and so then, uh, the, the state approved it with the, uh, requirement that we reduce the scope from. Uh, the previous pretty expansive scope, and then make sure that everything's fitting within like existing right of ways, uh, isn't that we are very clear that there's no imminent domain, you know, considered in any plans that, uh, that we put out there. Um, and so, so this scope revision, um, is then what was requested by the state, and, and then contingent upon that, then they said, okay, now you, now you are approved for the funding. The funding is two hundred fifty thousand dollars of, of federal dollars, uh, no local match required, um, it's purely a planning study, and so, uh, between. Whenever that approval was, like, early this summer and now, um, we've had. Various government offices working on getting the funding agreement in place so that. We, because we initially will need to scope the work and then, uh, put out a request for proposals, pick a consultant, and so we'd be hiring probably a local engineering firm. Uh, and then their job, first and foremost, would be to get, you know, get public input from everybody involved, and so first, you know, top of mind with that is, is the township as a representative of, you know, people who live out there, but also individual landowners that live out there. Individual landowners that live elsewhere, you know, it's a, you know, the, the whole county's impacted by decisions that are, that are made into this, so, so they, that's a, that's a pretty big process, so we can spend some of the two hundred fifty thousand on that. And we need, having an outside agency lead that, you know, our outside entity lead that, so that, you know, their, their professionals were not, and, uh, they've got processes to do that, so. And then they need mapping out, you know, what, what's feasible and what isn't, and the goal, the deliverable at the end would be, what are the plans that. That are, that, that could work, you know, what, and, and which are the most cost effective of those, and I think that could work, you know, top of mind here for could work means have broad public support behind it. So you know, a project that isn't gonna work because of geology, isn't gonna work, but a project that isn't gonna work just because it doesn't have public support also. So I think that that's, that's a totally reasonable finding, and the idea, you know, at least my idea when I, when I pursued this, was that. Having funding of this level, and we don't have to spend the two hundred, full two hundred fifty thousand, um, you know, anything we spend over that's out of our own pocket, so I wanna make sure that we're actually safely under that, that total. Um, but the, the idea is we did have planning documents where going forward, we would be able to say, okay, this, these improvements at Clay County Park are something that everybody thinks are a good idea, or most people think is a good idea, looks like they're cost effective. So then we can use that to demonstrate if we're seeking other grants, that we've done our homework and we've got projects that are really shovel ready and just aren't something that somebody cooked up and sounded like fun, so. So, so I think that, you know, the concerns that you, that you're voicing about four fifty-second are precisely what we're intending to, to collect, um, using, you know, using this process, but. A lot of people, you know, were, were concerned early on, they're like, well, why didn't you send out a mailing to, you know, everybody to be affected? Well, it affects everybody in the county, and, you know. I'd rather not spend county dollars on doing all that work, I would rather spend federal dollars on that, there are tax dollars, and if we don't use it, somebody else does, so.
Well. You know, I honestly, I could save you a lot of time on that.
Yep, and then.
You're gonna run into a lot of opposition and.
Yeah.
And I mean, all I gotta do is drive along that timber road. And figure out how you're gonna do that.
Yeah.
When I was upset, you know, a lot of people. I mean. My opinion, you're open up, you know, worms. So you're gonna worry.
Yeah.
I'm telling you, it's just, yeah, that's. As far as living out there, I, um, we'd like to see, uh, uh, four fifty-four. Redone. Look, you know, the, the asphalt road. Now, I can't tell you the last time that thing was ever had a new mat put on it. And at one time, uh, I think we gotta go back to maybe Terry Somerville. That road was redone to the Macklin Road, I believe, and the Macklin Road, where it was lowered and flattened out, whatever. And same thing there, that was supposed to continue on, but for whatever reasons, lack of funds, it never got done. So. And it's amazing, though, that, uh, that road is held up as well as it is, because there were a lot of truck traffic on that road. But, uh. But it gets there.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your coming and.
So since we have the front of the money, what budget is that coming out of?
Front one then?
The two hundred fifty thousand. We have to pay the money and then give it first. So where is that money coming from? In the interim?
Yeah, I just talked the budget for that somewhere. Yeah, I mean, it, it basically is a. One pound, yeah. And then you have to reimburse.
That'd be my expectation, but I don't think we formalize that.
Man, I think that's usually.
Usually we run out of contingency and don't touch the fund. And our fund is low, especially since we did not tell. And we have to build the road probably. So I'm just wondering where you're thinking. Where this money's gonna come from. We'll have to build the road as a portion, no, for the elevator.
Gotcha. Yeah.
Alright, so. There are motion, you can take them.
We had a motion already.
We take them, thank you.
To approve, to approve. Yeah, approve. So I'll rescind my motion upon discussion discovering that there are errors in the scope of work. It's okay with me. So.
Motion, the second.
Yeah, yeah, I rescind my initial motion authorizing you to sign this. Yep.
And always if we need a vote on that.
Yeah.
We need to vote on, uh, the decision.
Just settle that for. Corrections to, yeah, clerical corrections, so the hopes that it gives factors in time to be improved.
Well.
So.
Another motion.
I move to table for clerical corrections. Sorry.
Motion and a second to table, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Anything? Anything on the county part?
Um. Uh, only, uh, one thing that I think that I mentioned, uh, previously that Dakota, uh, they're now called a Dakota Exiles Ride, so previously Dakota Thirty-Eight Plus Two Ride. Um, they're gonna be staying in the, um, arena this weekend, so there's gonna be a bunch of TVs out there and something, maybe thirty riders, again, three hundred mile. Uh, ride here, no winter, and there should be, I believe, a, a community meal, uh, this weekend, so I haven't seen any flyers about it or anything, but I, I've, I've heard that it might be Sunday night, possibly in the armory, but I don't think that that's official. Um, as, as of any time, but that's, that's what I believe, so. You hear anything about it? Meet some, meet some folks that are coming through the area, they're also really trying to, um, you know, they're extremely grateful for how welcoming Clay County has been, uh, and they're looking forward to spread the word about what a, what a good welcoming community we are and a good place to have horse counts.
I hope you have better weather than the last time you, you stayed out there, so.
I hope so too, it looks like it's not close to the theater.
I, I stopped by in Mankato to the, the long park site. That I think will be their eventual destination. That's a neat place too. It's very, uh, nice, uh, nice roadside information styling, signs that are there at that park. I wish them well.
Building project.
We're meeting tomorrow, hopefully. I think, I think next week, they're supposed to have the garage doors in. So the building will be completely, it'll close that way.
Joint jurisdiction?
Nothing yet.
Any other condition or need, please?
We just have a meeting next Tuesday, right? The seventeenth of December.
Yeah, the joint jurisdiction meeting for the land is outside the areas.
And, um. There any needs when it's back in session?
Yes, I think Rod has one too, right? All of them going to executive session, but personnel matters.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to go into executive session, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move become out of executive session.
Sorry.
There's a motion and a second to come out of executive session. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any further need?
I, uh, signed up to go to the election ward. For VC, V C D C on legislative, uh. Report, the pre-report, or what they wanna call, premium, and I don't know if anybody else has, has signed up to do that.
Signed up for what?
Uh, there's a luncheon ward at noon.
Today.
V C D C today. You're sure of them, unless, unless I'm wrong here. I think it's a luncheon ward today on, on this, uh, report from our legislators on the upcoming session.
Is that just down in the V C D C offices?
No, it's out at, uh, it's a luncheon ward out at, uh. Nice center out at, uh. Okay. Did you guys get those?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't remember getting it, but.
Okay. So I just got reminded, I think, yesterday, when I was something about that Minneapolis thing. It's going to be.
Well, the, there was gonna be one at Rotary, I think, I heard tomorrow, right? That's like.
Sure, I have, uh, already messed up my shit.
Oh, no, no, you're right, uh, Tuesday, December tenth. Eleven thirty, doors open and lunch service program begins at noon.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, oh, this is the chamber president, okay.
V C D C.
Okay, yep. But. Oh, were we expecting our legislators to be there, or was this gonna be the, the chamber's interests?
It's our, our legislators who are gonna be there, so I understand, give a pre. A pre-report on the upcoming.
I hadn't seen that part, I think that was what I missed, I thought that it was just a.
Be a time we could ask Cindy if she's got the.
Got your plans in place for getting us some more refunding?
Yeah.
I think if I see in the refunding, it's those counties that aren't using the money.
Yes.
You know, their legislators are gonna be like, we don't even need it.
There was a bill last, last session on that, I'll sorry. To read.
There was, but they wouldn't reassign that money.
Yeah, I don't think it made it, I don't think it made it out of committee. And this with, uh, I think the chances are pretty slim. And this session to have any new monies.
Well, if they're talking about cutting the budget, that's the first one we count.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd be surprised if they're gonna need any money.
They pick on the kids first, us, us, uh, us kids.
Well, I think Rod explained it best. Rod explained it the best when he's like, well, they don't trust townships and they didn't trust the county.
Yeah.
Iowa superintendent's gotta be involved.
Yeah. Uh, we have a motion to come, come out.
At one, we did that, yeah.
Yeah.
I have one question, um.
Yeah.
Says other business.
Yeah.
Just fun business, um, next week is our, kind of our, our courthouse. Christmas fun week, we have dress up days and we have a potluck on Wednesday, um. So on the eighteenth, I'd like to invite you guys, and I can post this ahead of time, um, to our employee potluck. Close from about eleven to one. And this year, kind of a, it, kind of fun thing, um, Sarah in the treasurer's office and Emily in my office. Um, decided that we should have a door decorating. And so they were like the commissioners to judge the door decorating.
Well, that sounds like.
What, what would we compete?
Hot lock hours.
We've got a door to decorate.
We have a door.
So that would be very, those, uh, potluck hours on the eighteenth, so. Just a fun, we have a good time with Christmas, we, we do see first Santa and we do, um, you know, the potluck and obviously the door decorating and making a little traveling trophy. So that next year, the next office that wins the door decorating can have the traveling trophy.
That's eleven to one, is that right?
It's a really good one out there, yeah, that's right.
And where does it help?
Uh, so we'll have the potluck usually in one, a very similar area, so.
Hey, it's like you're getting a dish to share.
But I'll come to the food, but we should bring a dish to share.
I would say, always funny, you guys, they're just coming to enjoy.
Can I decorate my doors and see you all? There you go. Nobody's gonna come judge you.
Yeah, that's right.
It's gotta be a disbill. We're not even, we're not even, uh, let it, uh, we could, I guess, let it go out to the four eight center, but not to the new building. Not to the new building. That could make it pretty complex.
We need, uh, two down the road.
Right.
We adjourned.
Um, I mean, you have to, I think, to sell them on verified.
The district meeting.
Oh, that's right.
I don't think we adjourned from regular session.
Yeah, from the executive session.
Exactly, we still in regular session.
That's what I was driving.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I moved to it here.
Second.
There's a motion to adjourn in a second, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And you got me down to the district meeting right there, I think.
Yes.